All right, welcome everybody. It's 6:02. This is a meeting of the Town of Rutland's Zoning Board of Appeals for July 6th, 2022. I'm Chris Sandoval, the chairman. Paul Paulson is the vice chair. Jacob Morse is, Attorney Jacob Morse is a member. Attorney Rick Soretta is online. He's a member and Paul Crane is also a member. Attorney Susa is the applicant. And we have a consultant online and the attorney has some consultants as well online, as well as some other townspeople. First up tonight on the agenda is the meeting minutes from June 29th, 2022. I didn't have any issues with anything, how we, you guys?
I'm good. I'll make a motion to accept.
All right. We have a motion to accept it. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Jacob, thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes as prepared by Tamika for June 29th, 2022?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor to accept the minutes as prepared for June 29th meeting? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Meeting minutes are accepted. Thank you Tamika for doing that. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Tamika Murphy, but she's really the glue that holds this whole thing together. Does a great job. Next up on the agenda is the public hearing continuance of application for special permit continued from June 29th for Blue Sky Towers, the third LLC. The applicant is speaking, seeks a special permit from the ZBA for a new cell tower at 12 Phillips Road. To bring you everything up to date, last week, the three variances that they requested were voted on and approved by the board. And it was also, we discussed last week's meeting, a bunch just kind of jumped into the civil plan and the actual review of the site plan. We had made a list of comments, went over those with the applicant. We sent those, those comments regarding the site plan, civil plans specifically, off to the applicant and his engineers made corrections to the drawings. I reviewed those drawings that were just submitted to us this week, revised, everything looks pretty good there, but we'll go through those attorney in just a moment, get through those things and just make sure all that's all clear and everybody on the board is good with it. We also have received some correspondence, Tamika. There was, I believe, an email from Carolyn Street, or was it? Regarding the, that was the land, the devaluation of the land. And I believe you just sent out an email like literally on my way here, I think I saw it on my phone as I got here. I'm not sure who that was from, but it was something in regards to the health concerns of the cell towers. So the board and the town has received those, they're duly noted. At this time personally, I know we've, we've covered these immensely before previously. I don't have anything further to add than what we've already discussed regarding the health concerns and devaluation of property. Does anybody, any other members on the board have any comments or any concerns they want to discuss with that new information or do you just want to keep moving forward?
No, I believe that information was actually already submitted to the board in previous communications. So what, I don't believe it was new information. And I think we've beaten that down ad nauseam.
Okay. So you don't have any comment? Rick, you good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, Chris.
Okay. So we'll just continue on. At this point attorney, thank you for getting back to us with the updated drawings. I believe your engineer, Tom, is it? Tom Johnson?
Yes, Tom Johnson.
Yeah.
He's also on them tonight.
Yeah, I see him on there, thank you. So that's good. Looks like a lot of those things you guys said you would correct, you did correct. That's good. Just to run through these items real quick, the issue about the propane and the generator and the diesel generator tanks, they're all going to be propane. Attorney Susa submitted a, the specification of the unit he listed in his application, which is a pole unit, I believe it was a 12 or 15 KW unit. That specification was also received along with the revised civil plans. So it will be a propane only DC generator and there'll be remote tanks. And the revised plan that they submitted of the compound shows the tanks and the generators and the proper room for up to four of those, for the four potential carriers that they could have. So that issue is good. And guys on the board, if you have any comments or guidelines as I'm going through them, please just, just spout it out, okay? Don't, don't be too formal here, don't wait to the end. Item number three we had discussed was the driveway and you kind of delineated that, Tom. You kind of clarified just how they're coming off there, so I'm happy with that. I don't have any issues with how the, the access road's coming off of that. Your drawing on EC2, detail number one on EC2, you've updated the 75 foot of rip wrap, three inch rip wrap for that rather than 50 feet. So that'll help keep debris, you know, getting into the roadway of Phillips Road as construction traffic goes on and off the site. Drawing P1, the drainage on both sides, it looks like on the drawing you put a little rip wrap in on each side of that, is that correct, Tom?
Yes. Yep, that's what we ended up doing.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that. That's good. So that'll help out the drainage around that wetland area, just keep it going the way it should. Drawings P1 and P2, the cut line, you've confirmed the cut line of the trees to cut the access road in the area for the compound. It's shown on the plans. The applicants have agreed, that's the, that's the max of cutting they're going to be doing for this project. And it will be in the order of conditions that we're going to set that there'll be no other tree cutting on that parcel. They've all agreed to that. Item seven, item seven and item eight just really responds to, really regards to the electric transformer pad that'll be placed just outside the compound. That pad, whether it has oil containment, the ballers that's all placed, that's all done and engineered by National Grid. The applicant has to meet National Grid standards. The electricians that install that have to meet those standards. National Grid has their own inspection, trench inspector that inspects that whole process and they will maintain that process or they don't get power from National Grid. So all that, they understand that and that's all written down and documented, so they'll follow National Grid's direction in their engineering for all of that electrical overhead and underground installations. Drawing D1 also just reflects, just some details as far as the six inch rather than four to six inch of, of top coat, it's going to be six inch minimum, three quarter minus crushed stone, quarry hard pack, in lieu of just a four to six. They've updated their plans, it shows minimum six inch. Drawing D1, detail number three, also 12 inch minimum thickness for all processed gravel sub base under the roadways. That access road, they had 10 to 12 inches where requiring minimum of 12 inches of sub base gravel to keep the road tight and firm. They've agreed to that, their drawings haven't updated, that's all to speak. Drawing D1, detail one, they're going to have, right now the six foot fence has barbed wire all around it. The detail didn't show, it had barbed wire on the gates. The detail now on the plan shows that, they're going to have that, three rows of the barbed wire on that to keep anybody from jumping over. Item number 12, we discussed a gate. I didn't see a gate shown on the drawings and I just was, I'm just curious because we, we said we didn't care whether you did it or not. It wasn't really required by anybody here on the board, but I was just, so you decided not to go over the gate at this time? I know, I thought you said you might.
That's right, Mr. Chairman. I think there's been discussions with the property owner that we may put a gate beyond the garage, but we haven't decided on exactly when. It was my understanding that it was not a requirement of the board that we had ability to do it in the future.
All right. Yep, yep, yep. That's not a problem at all, attorney. All right. Item number 13, the signage associated with the site. Per their drawings, they have one, it's approximately about two foot by about 18 inch sign. It goes on the fence on the right hand side of the fence as you drive up to the compound, on the fence in the compound. And that's the requirements by FCC they have to have on there. It meets that requirements and that's the only sign they'll have on the site. So that's confirmed by the applicant, it's shown on the drawings, updated. Lightning protection system, yes, they'll be putting in an extensive lightning protection system for the tower and all of the equipment on the pad. And that's up to them, it's really, we just wanted to clarify if they were doing it or not. They said they'd be doing it. They showed on the plans. We asked if there was going to be any proposed site lighting for the access road and around the compound. And there will be no roadway access lighting, no compound lights to light the compound. There's just a couple of control cabinets that are approximately four by six feet wide. And when you open those up, they have a little light inside the control cabinet, so technicians at night can see what they're working on. And we're fine with that, that's been approved. They've confirmed that's the only lighting for the site. And then we discussed about the fall zone, the wetlands, you clarified that, that's no problem. And then the, you just referenced the size of the concrete base for really just informational purposes, so they did that in their response. So again, everything looks like it's been updated, guys. Everything looks like it's on par with everything I'm looking for. I have no other questions or comments about the site plans. Any other board members have anything?
Not for me, Chris. You're kind of the site plan expert, so I'm following along with you and I agree with everything so far.
All right. Paul, Rick, you guys are good?
Yeah, I'm good, good, Chris.
Okay. At this time, I just would like to open this up to the public. I just want to be clear, this is just in specific, any comment you may have regarding the site plan and the items we just discussed, okay?
Yeah, Chris, Chris, may I have your heard on that?
Uh, yes, you can.
Chris, I, I, I laud your, your desire to be fair and, you know, and let the people speak, but we, we have closed public discussion on this. And I, I mean, I, I'm just going to put my two cents and say I, I don't think it's appropriate to reopen it at this time.
Well, I believe we just, we closed public discussion last meeting, but we did not close it for the hearing, correct?
No, my, my understanding is that we closed, we, we, I mean, I, we closed it completely. We didn't close it for the meeting. It's closed, it was voted on, and I, I don't, I don't think we can, we can allow any more public discussion.
I agree with Rick.
It was my understanding that we may have have closed it for the variance and we, we closed it for the, the meeting last week, but we did not close the public discussion.
Can we check the minutes on that?
Yes. So when you go to close the public discussion at a specific meeting, it only applies to that meeting. The only time that it's completely cut off is when it's the public hearing itself. So the public hearing for the variance was closed, there can be no discussion with relation to the variance. The public hearing for the special permit technically is still open.
Still open.
And it's at the board's discretion how they want to handle public comment.
Okay. Paul, Rick, did you guys hear to me around that?
Chris, I'll defer to your judgment on them.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I'm, I'm just going to stick by my, I was planning to give everybody a chance if any, any applicant or anybody had any comments or concerns specific to the site plans to this project, that they wanted to be heard at this time. We'll hear your comments and listen to those. Please address Tamika Murphy with your name and address if you want to be heard on any of those comments we just discussed relevant to the site plan approval. Does anybody have any, any comments? Ma'am in the back in the black shirt?
Charlene O'Connor, Nine St. Moore, Rutland. I have not seen a site plan map. Is there one so that everybody can see what you're talking about?
Yes, there's, the site plan is, everything's been uploaded to the town for about, well, probably about six to nine months now, the information's been out there, ma'am. And this is just a plan, you're welcome to come up and take a look at this plan.
I'm recovering from surgery, so I have not been as active as I may.
Sure. Is there a young man, sir, would you mind just passing that along to her and she can just? Thank you. Somebody else had their hand up while she was reviewing that? Ms. Street, go ahead.
Thank you. Carolyn Street, Love and Medical Circle.
Yep.
I heard something interesting from a resident this week that I thought I'd pass along, and she said I could use her name, Elaine Munzner, longtime Rutland resident. So she was on Pleasantdale Road the day of the balloon test and she's, and I don't know if it was during leaf on or leaf off, but she saw the tower from the farm looking over Damon Pond. She saw the balloon, she saw the balloon. So I just want to point out that nobody's mentioned that before, that's a very scenic viewpoint in Rutland. And it highlights that we don't know everywhere that this tower is going to be visible from. I thought that was an important point she made, that it's visible over Damon Pond from Pleasantdale Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm going to go back.
Okay, hearing done. Ma'am, do you have anything else to add?
I understand it's on private land and I understand it's in wetlands. Am I correct?
The tower is not located in a wetland, ma'am. It's, there are wetlands on the 12 acre parcel and the tower is not located in a wetland, no. They do have to cross the wetland to get to it, which is legal. They've gone through Conservation Commission, they will have that approved, the order of condition of this permit, which is totally legal to do, you can cross wetlands and replicate them. Their drawings show the replication of the wetlands and everything is in order with, with everything with the...
And again, I apologize for being...
Oh, no problem, ma'am, I know you, you look like a first time...
Yeah.
... newcomer here, newcomer at the...
My question is, what is the need for this? Are there people who are looking for this?
No.
Is that why this has all been raised?
A need for the tower?
Yeah.
Yeah. The applicant, we spent meetings going over their needs and quite honestly, ma'am, at this time, I, you'd have to go through the meeting notes.
So they do have people interested in it.
I'm just talking specifically about civil issues right now. We're not talking about the needs for anything like that right now, I'm sorry. Have to stay on point with you. I'm sorry, this is the first meeting you've come to, but we, we've gone through this quite significantly. One more thing, Ms. Street.
I have 60 or 70 more signatures to submit to Tamika.
That's fine, you can submit them.
400, on last count, 446 residents have signed the petition opposing the tower. Zero residents have spoken in the past seven months in support of the tower.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. So at this time, next I think we just need to kind of work towards, kind of reviewing the order of conditions, guys. We've got, I know we sent off, I believe I sent out a list of order of conditions, correct?
Attorney Suetta last night sent out the draft conditions that he had sent back, but that was the last...
Okay. Actually, the attorney sent those back, yeah?
I looked at them today, I left them on my desk, I don't know if you guys have them.
I don't have them with me. I thought I did, can't seem to find them.
It's actually in his email, it wasn't an attachment, it was part of the email.
Ah, okay.
Chris, and Attorney Susa's letter and conditions, the one that they weren't agreeing to was you had said the land can't be subdivided?
Yep.
And they're saying that they don't want to agree to that because the owner of the property may want to subdivide that in the future?
Well, as long as there's a cell tower there, they cannot subdivide that. When the cell tower comes down...
Could do whatever they want.
They can do whatever they want. The property reverts back to do whatever they want. But that acreage is part of this whole site parcel and if that applicant does not want to agree to that, then that is going to be, it's just not going to fly with me personally. I will, I will, I will not approve a site plan that, that would not allow that condition. So...
Mr. Chairman, can I speak on that?
Sure, go ahead.
So this is a fairly large parcel of land, it's about 13 acres, almost 14 acres. And the tower itself is segregated to one location on the tower. Part of drafting the conditions, following your lead and I should say the board's lead on what was, what I thought was important was to first make sure that there was going to be a tree buffer that would be maintained around the tower itself so that the visibility aspects of the tower would always be maintained. So what we did is we created a plan that showed an area where trees could not be removed. First of all, 150 feet around the tower and then in addition to that, drawing on at least comments that Mr. Maxson said, which is sometimes it's more important to control the trees that are on the outer perimeter of the property. So what we did was create another buffer on the outer perimeter of the property, closest to the tower, where there would be no trees surround, that would be removed. But once again, this is a very large tower. Typically, these towers are here for a long extended period of time. There is a residential aspect of it, close to the entrance of the property that, you know, that may be subdivisible in the future. And we felt that there was enough wetlands as well on the property that would control future uses. There's significant wetlands on that side of the property away from the tower. And so we felt that there's a process in place in the town to control future subdivision. There are laws and regulations regarding future subdivision and we felt that that was somewhat not related to the proposed tower. So that's, those are the reasons why we felt that, that that prohibition on, on future subdividing of this lot was not acceptable. It's really more not acceptable to the property owner that we can't control than, than to the tower developer.
Sure, understand. And again, you know, if, if the property owner can't agree to that, I'm, I'm just not, I mean, we discussed last meeting that there wouldn't be any tree cutting. We discussed the tree cutting line on the site plan. I had asked, specifically asked that there be no other tree cutting on that parcel. You all said yes, I didn't hear any dissension at that time. But to just make sure that, you know, there's no more tree cutting on that parcel, you know, we discussed not subdividing that and allowing any, any other construction. And with all due respect, attorney and, and the property owners, we did a balloon test, that balloon test was based upon that vegetation that is existing right now. If you're going to start cutting off acreage, that, that to me is just a total game changing, major problem for me to approve this plan.
Chris, can I have your heard?
Yes, Rick, go ahead.
Chris, I agree with you 100%. I am, I'm not 100% sure that we, that if we approve the cell tower, this special permit, that we actually have control, that much control over the rest of the land. I'm in total agreement with you in principle. I, I, I'm just not sure. I think Attorney Susa might have a point that we, that they have no control over the property owner and I'm not sure how much we have either.
Well, we have control of approving the site plan.
We lease a portion of it, including the access road and then the compound. We don't lease the rest of the property, therefore we don't control the rest of the property. That, that's, that's the dilemma that we're faced with. I apologize, Mr. Soretta, if I interrupted you.
No, it's fine, it's Attorney Susa, no problem.
Chris, I'm looking at, was it page A1 on the, yeah, page A1 on the plan?
Yep.
You know, this is in the back corner of the lot, of the acreage. So, I mean, there's a parcel there that's part of ID41A-A-1, which I believe is outside of this parcel.
Yep.
That's the closest parcel to this, which could be developed, which under your saying, you know, no, no subdivision of it, that would be closest piece of property and that's not even owned by the, by the current, you know? So I think maybe we want to look at maybe some extended setbacks or something like that.
Well, in all fairness to the applicant, I'd want to see a plan drawn up where they would want to potentially develop this parcel, but I, I, right now, I, I have no inclination to, listen, I mean, the, the, the looks in the sight of this tower is a, is a major problem for this town. And, you know, you, I, I, I got a major problem with this.
Yeah, we're going to look bad if three, four, seven years from now, there's a bunch of trees cut down and this thing is a huge eyesore.
No way, no way.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could share the plan that I also sent to you together with the conditions?
Yep.
I think that helped. Tamika allows me to share the screen. Let me know if I can do that.
Hang on, Rick, they have to do that in the back, but they would have already asked that.
Okay. Yeah, Peter, Peter Crane will allow, give you access to do that. Attorney Susa to upload a document, Peter, if you can allow that, please? The man behind the curtain. Okay, thank you. He says you're all set, attorney.
Okay. So we'll share this screen right here.
Thank you, Peter.
Let me know if you can see it.
Should I say the Wizard of Oz?
Right.
So what we were proposing is, is you can see the tower compound is here. This is our access road, if you could follow my cursor all the way to Phillips Road. As you can see, our tower is really set back in the corner.
Yep.
So what we're proposing as a no tree removal boundary is this round radius, which is 150 foot radius from the tower, center of the tower. But in addition to that, also not remove any trees within this yellow boundary as well. So you'd have protection, these trees could not be removed and then none of these trees could be removed as well. And there would be no development also within those boundaries. What you'll also see is that there are some natural protections, I think, for the town and for your concerns that you articulated, which is all of these wetlands. So not much can be done there. You have a whole control system relative to development here.
So what area would they want to develop or carve off? Is, is anybody representing the homeowner here, the property owner?
Yes, so, so in discuss, we didn't have extensive discussions on this, but they don't have any immediate plans to develop anything, but they also realize this is a long-term arrangement. You know, this is, I think, property that's been in the family for a long time. So there's no definitive plans right now, but as you can see, there are significant limitations to any development on this property. And so all we can do as less...
Sounds like an easy solution, though.
Yeah. Well, it's an easy solution, but I think it's just trying to look long term. And so what we control is this compound and this road. And so what we were able to do is at least get some additional protections for the town, which is this area right here, this buffer, together with this round radius, which is a pretty significant area as well. So no trees can be removed and no development within those areas.
Chris, you know, if you look at it, the, see how that lot shuts out along Phillips Road up across the top of it there?
Yeah.
Right? Thank you, Attorney Susa. Yeah, right there. I mean, that I could see if at some point the family wanted to, I'm not sure how big that property is, but that, that I could see them developing and not affecting this, the other area where the cell tower is at all, you know? That really looks like it's the only developable piece up there and I don't see that...
Right.
... in an issue.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of people on that Phillips Road that that's right near his line of sight, you know? And, and, you know, we've put together this, you know, I mean, so, so, so what, the balloon test now, it doesn't mean what it means now, you know? I mean, I, I mean, I really wish that was kind of on a plan and brought up a hell of a lot earlier than at the 11th, at the 59th minute, 59 minute of the frigging 23rd hour. I mean, this is a little disappointing, not going to lie.
Could I, could I have one comment here as well?
Who, who is this?
Tom.
Sorry, this is Tom Johnson.
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
Attorney Susa, if you happen to have that full plan set, you might be able to scroll to the C2 sheet, which is...
Yeah, unfortunately, this is, this is the only one I have, Tom, that's unshareable, unless you have it.
Because there's just three yellow lines on that drawing. I don't see an end to that, to that yellow line. It just kind of stops.
Right here?
Yeah, I mean, the yellow line, it's a U, it's not a, I mean, how do you, have you delineated that anyways?
It's at the wetland line there. Do you happen to have the plan set front of you and are you able to, to flip the sheet C2 of that plan set?
I have it, yeah, C2, yep. I'm on it, go ahead.
What you see there is the Phillips Road and the intersection of Fairview Avenue in the top right corner of the plan.
Yep, gotcha.
And then in and around that house is what's depicted as the existing tree line. So the existing lot isn't fully tree, particularly around the existing house. So there, if the, the main concern is preserving trees, there is an area that is not currently treeed. And that, to me, when you look at the extent of the wetlands...
So his Phillips Road, this is the existing tree line right here. So what he's saying, in this part of the parcel, you got wetlands here, if they were to develop this side, they already have trees cut down. It's not, I mean...
Yes.
So I mean, I guess, you know, if they're going to put something where there's no trees, I mean, I, I, you know, that wouldn't be a problem.
And I, and I think that you see, can see the blow up of that wetland line on that plan as well and, and then how, you know, restrictive that wetland line is to anything too far south of that and anything too far to the west of that. So there is, there is some small area there, who knows if they want to put a garage or, or some other sort of structure, there's room to potentially do that without removing trees and without maintaining the wetland.
This is wood over here, so this... I mean, you you could come off the other side of Phillips over here and do something over here in this wooded area. But then the view coming this way has been.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but even the the buffer, wetlands buffer here restricts anything that you can put in this parcel as well, without relief from the const. You would have to, you definitely have to permit through consultation for anything.
Is it possible to make a comment?
Who who is that?
This is Karen Stewart from 4 Phillips Road.
Not right now, ma'am. We're not accepting comments from the public, but hang tight, okay? Well, guys, this is a little bit of a game changer here.
Chris.
Yeah, Tamika.
If I may, if I'm not speaking out of turn.
No, please do.
One other thing to consider is that they, if they are gonna further subdivide the parcel, they're gonna have to do an A and R. And there are specific requirements for that, including frontage and area requirements on a road. So that's gonna restrict them as well to a certain extent.
I I don't see how they get anywhere near the tower to cut trees down for any type of building. But you would know.
You know.
More than I, but.
It's one of the reasons that we made such a large radius around the tower, but then we're also giving additional protections around the perimeter just to try to address some of the points that were made at the last meeting, I think, primarily by Mr. Maxson, relative to the perimeter, which I think is helpful, and I think I agree with it as well. Very rarely do you have a situation, and I've worked on a lot of these applications, where they restrict this big of a lot entirely from tree removal. You really want to protect the area that's around the tower itself and the perimeter.
Yeah, personally, I don't really. Yeah, thank you for your comment, but personally, I'm not too concerned about what's been done in the past or anywhere else. I'm concerned about the town of Rutland and 12 Phillips Road. So this is unique. I don't know. I made, oh, boy.
Hey, Chris, Chris, could I be heard?
Please, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, I I wa, I'm looking at the map, and I I watched their explanation. And I'm, I, I would have to say that even though, you know, you and I are in sync in principle on this issue, I I really, I'm looking at the map, and I really don't think they they're gonna be able to to develop this or cut down too many trees in such a way that it's going to affect the view of the tower. But, you know, I I think you're doing, I think you're doing a good thing by by really taking a close look at this, though. But if it makes you feel any better, I I I think they they probably put a really big radius around this tower, and I I think it's going to be okay. My two cents.
I I would agree with Rick. I think the radius is big enough that it makes that their acreage unusable. I mean, we can all agree there's not gonna be a subdivision going in there. That's just not gonna happen. If they build, if they ever want to build some type of a building, it's gonna be very close to the existing one. They can't, they can't get anywhere near it. Unless I'm looking at it wrong, Chris.
Attorney, let me ask one question. As far as cutting down trees, to what extent will they agree to not cut down any trees? Just those yellow lines or anywhere further than that?
So what what we've been able to get is just within the yellow lines and the red lines. No trees cut down within the red radius.
The red radius around the tower.
Right. No trees cut down here and no development here, and no trees cut down in the yellow U-shaped area as well.
Why is the yellow line not on the lot line? Why is there a buffer around the lot?
It it's it's to protect you, right? It's to give you essentially to say, okay, not only are we gonna not cut down trees on the lot line, we're not gonna cut down trees within this area, this 54.
Well, no, what you're saying, well, correct me if I'm wrong. You're saying you've got a U-shaped, you got the U-shaped lines, the yellow lines, and you're saying you're not gonna cut anything within that U, correct?
That's right.
So what about the outside of the U? Does that mean you can cut them on the outside of the U?
No, we're saying you cannot cut within, between the green and the yellow. You cannot cut down any of those trees. Because the whole point is to, is to maintain a line of trees.
So you can cut, you you, so you can cut all those trees all the way up to that tower and the inside of that parcel. If he wants to log this thing out, make money for logging, we're gonna, you're saying that's what he wants to be able to do?
So he could cut down a tree here.
Right there, yeah.
But he could not, he can't cut down any trees here. And honestly, Mr. Chairman, if he cuts down trees here, that's not gonna affect the ability to see the tower because.
That's your opinion, attorney, but that's not my opinion. I can promise you that, sir.
You still have all of these trees protecting and.
Let me tell you something. You did a balloon test, sir. With all due respect, you did a balloon test from that, from two miles out of town to that tower, okay? And you you were fine to use all those trees for your pitches. But now you think it's all right just to, just to leave 100 feet of trees around that tower? I beg to differ with you, sir. That's very disingenuous of you, with all due respect.
So it's a, it's 150 feet of trees, and it's also an additional perimeter as well.
Pardon me.
And I would differ.
You sold us on a bill of goods of 12, 13, 14 acres, and now you want to butcher that down one acre? That ain't flying for me, brother.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, we did not. That's just simply, I object to that statement.
No, I I hear you, but you never, you never, you never showed, well, I asked you guys at the last meeting. I beg to differ with you, sir. I asked you and your and your engineer at the last meeting, the tree line cut you show on that drawing, and I'll reference that drawing if you need me to, was the only area you were gonna cut trees down on, and would you be amenable to not cut any of the trees down in that parcel? And you guys agreed at that last meeting on that. So.
So there's a difference, there's a difference between what trees we have to cut down to construct. That's what we're responding to. We're trying to minimize the number of trees in order to get access to the compound. And that's what Mr. Johnson talked about, was what do we have to cut down to build our driveway and to build our compound so that we can construct the tower? That's something that's under our control, and that's something that I can respond to and that we did respond to. The second question is, how can I possibly control the property owner who owns the rest of the land, right, that I don't control, that Blue Sky Tower simply doesn't control at all? What we're trying to do is find a compromise, right? We've tried to find a compromise that protects the interest that I think that the board is trying to protect, which is visibility of the tower. And I think we've done that through this condition of the perimeter. And, you know, Mr. Maxson's here to represent the town. Maybe he can speak to this as well. You know, he's had experience with this also. But what I can tell you is that I can't force the property owner to further restrict his or her rights relative to the remaining use of the property that we don't lease. I can only control the lease area that we can, that we, that we lease pursuant to our ground lease.
I I certainly respect and understand that you cannot control him, but you you can ask him. And if he says no, then we take that under advisement of approving this site plan. If he says yes, we take that under advisement of of reviewing this site plan. So, understood. I understand. It's not your, you know, it's not your.
Maybe if that's the position of, if that's the position of the board, maybe then we need a continuance so that board can ask for outside counsel review on this issue, on to what extent certain conditions would be permissible on the, in these types of applications. And we can also do the same and ask and have that dialogue with our landlord relative to what he or she is amenable to.
Respectfully, Attorney, if I may, Chris.
Please, Jacob, go ahead.
I don't think that we need to consult with outside counsel. I think it's well within our purview to, as one of the conditions, to have the property owner be prohibited from cutting any trees. I think it's pretty simple. Right now, I guess the property owner isn't willing to do that. And it looks like a huge chunk to me within that U that they'd be able to cut down. And I think that that's our major concern, and I don't see that consulting outside counsel would would be useful.
Yeah, we just, I I think it's, we just disagree on the impact of cutting a tree within the U if you're going to maintain a line of trees in that, in that area between the yellow and the green, which I think will protect the visibility of the tower, together with the radius of 150 feet around the tower. To me, we think that that's enough of a protection to, to address the visibility concerns that the board has.
And I may agree with you if those trees didn't exist. So if those trees weren't there now, and we did the two balloon tests that we did, and we were satisfied as we are now with the balloon test, that would be different. But I can't tell what it's gonna look like in the future with all those trees missing. The balloon test is useless.
Yeah.
So right now, I'm happy with the balloon test, and I'm, and I'm, I'm essentially happy with most of the conditions that that we're proposing.
Right.
But the, that's no longer the case. It's, because it's gonna be something different. I have to consider the fact that 100%, this property owner is gonna cut down a ton of trees, because that's what they're indicating to you. They're, they're refusing, they're refusing to agree not to cut them down. So I don't, I have to assume that they're gonna cut them. So that's a completely different site, and it's a completely different balloon test and a completely different application in my mind.
I hear you, Jacob.
I don't think there was ever an intent to clear cut, but I think there's an objection to a prohibition on cutting, cutting any trees.
So it's my opinion, then, if the, if the property owner wants to lease this portion of their property to have a cell tower, we're basically on board. All they need to do is agree not to cut any trees. That's, that's gonna be my, my take.
Mr. Chairman, David Maxon here.
Yeah, David, I wanted to give you a chance. Please, please do, sir. Give me your, give me your opinion there.
All right. Thanks. Yes, Mr. Sousa was kind of acting on one of my observations about how cell towers are visible and how to protect their visibility. I do agree with the members of the board who have said that there is no documentation demonstrating that this proposal would in fact provide substantially the protection that is is needed to maintain the status quo. So you don't have evidence to support this proposal. I think it's an interesting approach, and, and that's great. But what I'm hearing is that you're at an impasse, and you cannot get the applicant to agree to something that their, their landlord has not agreed to. But I'll make a couple of observations. In my experience, not as an attorney, the special permit is something that is issued that goes with the land. So it doesn't necessarily go with just the leased part of the parcel. And of course, Attorney Sousa can clarify that, and you, with your experience as zoning board members, certainly can weigh in on that. So.
I would agree with you, sir.
That being the case, if if you were to apply a bunch of conditions that were egregious to the property owner and the, and the prospective tenant, there are two remedies. The first remedy is that the property owner or the tenant on behalf of the property owner could appeal that condition. The second is that at some time, 10 years down the road, the property owner decides they want to donate some land to the town and subdivide it, or take a piece of it and turn it into a second residential lot. Can they not come back to the board and request a modification of a special permit with all the plans and everything and the evaluations of visibility and all of this stuff that would be necessary to modify the special permit before proceeding with the subdivision?
Yeah, I would agree that those are two avenues. Correct. That would be amenable to, or that would be available, I should say, to both the petitioner and the property owner. We were just trying to be honest about this issue. After having a discussion, after the conditions were proposed, we had a conversation with the property owner because we do not control the rest of the land, and there was some resistance to a blanket prohibition. So I apologize, David. Just want to be responsive to your comment.
Thank you. And and I, I think that's the point here, is that it sounds like we're at impasse and we'll just continue to go around in circles. So the board could either proceed by imposing a condition that can be relieved either on appeal or at some time in the future can be reconsidered by the zoning board in its capacity. Or you can go ahead with this process of trying to settle this out so all, all parties agree on whatever the final condition is. And I think that choice is, is up to you at this point, the board.
Thank you, David. That was some, a couple of excellent points there. Thank you.
Chris.
I'm gonna look to, excuse me, I I'm gonna ask that Rick and Jacob, one at a time, speak here. Rick, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then we'll let Jacob go, because I just want to look to you guys for the legality of our ability to do that in this, you know, to, because, to make them come back to this board. Because technically, they would be going to the planning board for an A and R lot in town. And then they're not gonna have the history of this decision and these conditions. So I, that's my concern with giving them that option to, you know, just come back. But go ahead, Rick, please.
Yeah, so, you know, we have a narrow special permit in front of us, and, you know, there's a buffer zone, and there's, there's part of the, it's a fairly large parcel. There's a, a significant part of it that's covered by wetlands. That's beyond no one's control. A significant part of it is, is gonna be taken up by the cell tower. I, I'm not sure that we, we have any legal power over the rest of the land. Now, David Maxson thinks we do, and he might be right. I, in all the time that, that Chris, you and I have been on the board for a long time, I don't think I've ever, we've ever come across this, this issue before. So my, my gut is telling, without researching it fully, my gut is telling me we don't have control over the rest of the, the land. I, I think we could put a condition on, it, it might be an illegal condition. It might fly, it might not fly. So I, my, what I'm, what I think is, we should do is, is go ahead and put the condition on anyways. And if it, if this whole thing blows up, it blows up. If it's, if it's appealed successfully on that narrow issue, may, you know, fine. But I, I, I just, I can't imagine that we have control over that entire parcel. I'd like to hear what Jake has to say, though.
Before I give it over to Jake, I'm just gonna tell you, Rick, a lot of construction from Boston out to Springfield. I've seen a lot of order, a lot of, a lot of orders of conditions on high rises and all sorts of residential, commercial, industrial property. And yes, you control the whole parcel. The towns can do, can make those, those developers do whatever they desire in those orders and conditions. And I would say we are more than well within our bounds to control anything on this parcel, especially as it relates to the visual impacts of this tower so close to the center of town. So.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion on that.
No, no, Chris, you, you do have a lot of site plan experience. I mean, you, you have, you have the whole time we've been on the board. And, you know, and I, I mean, you, you, you apparently have more experience in this than I do. I'm going with a gut hunch, but let's, I'm not disagreeing with you. You're probably, you might be, may well be right.
Jacob?
I, so, Rick, I agree with Chris, mostly because it's one lot.
Yeah.
We're not dealing with multiple lots. If we were asking the owner of this lot to do something or prohibit them from doing something on an adjacent lot, I think that would be different. I think this is absolutely something we can do, and I, that's my position that that's the way we vote. And I don't think that they're, they have a chance of a successful appeal. This is one lot. We can ask them.
You're probably right.
Yeah. We can ask them to do or not to do anything we want, especially with regard to the, the trees that cover up the, the tower. That's what we've been focusing on for months.
Well, the way you, the way you phrase that, you know, it, it makes sense to me. So, yeah, I'm, I'm on board with, I'm on board with both of you now.
So if we.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
If we made that as a condition, the, the property owner takes it or leaves it, right?
I'll go along with that. I'll go, I'll go along with those conditions.
Yeah, if we do that, then we've got to look at, certainly adjusting the, you know, this, the, the permit. Originally, we were just gonna let it go in perpetuity. And then Selectman Benoit, she referenced, you know, let's put some, let's reel this in, let it put a leash on this dog, which was, you know, we kind of talked about a 10-year deal. But we, we gotta, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna put that in the order of conditions and, you know, we, we know that, we know their opinion of this thing, we've got to, we've got to reel that, that permit's gotta come back to us often, as often as we can make it in the bylaw, in my opinion.
Five years?
Yeah, is it five or three? And I think it's five, right, in the bylaw?
Five, five years, by law.
Thank you, attorney. Yeah, so, so we'd have to, we'd have to not grant that waiver, you know? We'd have We'd have to stick with the five-year permit. So I guess, again, I'll kind of, Jacob, you're a thank you for, and you and Rick kind of leading the legality of this here. You know?
One lot.
It's one lot. You can't cut a tree down, you can't subdivide it. Those are the orders and conditions. And if they don't want to agree to it, then they don't sign the lease. You know, the owner doesn't give the lease.
We have a lease already in place.
The lease is in place?
Yes.
Hope we can get out of it.
It's not our...
No, it's not our, that's not our concern, but... So...
Is a question here? The lady has a question.
Yeah, okay, man, we're not opening up to the public right now. Thank you. Well, where do we go from here, guys?
Does he go back to his client?
Talk about...
Excuse me, man. Thank you.
Does he go back to his client and see if he's...
Want to give him the time to talk this over with his client?
I think he needs to.
I mean, I was inclined, I think that's a pretty good idea. I was thinking about that. Just give these guys a chance to find common ground and see what they, see what they want to come up with, if there's any kind of...
That would be my recommendation as well.
I believe you did recommend that, Attorney, I mean, Consultant Maxson suggested that, which I was, yeah, which I...
Yep. And once again, this is not an obstacle by Blue Sky Towers. This is simply an obstacle on behalf of the property owner. So I'd like the ability to speak to him again and see what he's amenable to and what he's not amenable to.
That's more the fair to give him time, right?
He's going to, I mean, he's not going to be able to do anything with that property. So I don't see why he wouldn't agree. But I understand it's not you, Attorney Sousa. I completely understand. I deal with clients all the time that try and give them advice and they go the other way, but...
Are we looking at saying no tree cutting at all still or like within that, within and outside that U-shaped area?
Well, I'm saying none at all unless they convince me otherwise. I mean, I'm still open to suggestions, but I don't see why they wouldn't just agree not to cut any trees.
I mean, what they show on this drawing to cut down is so far from what I would allow. I can tell you that. I mean, if there was a little bit along Phillips Road or something to put a house lot in there, I might consider that. You know, that there's that little, little spike that kind of, that's existing that sticks out. All right, maybe take 10, 15 trees down right there. But I'm telling you right now, if you're going to start coming up that access road and just clear cutting that thing, no way. That's something I would never, I would never go for. So I'm certainly more than amenable and I'd like the board's opinion. I mean, Attorney Sousa's been a gentleman the whole time. He's done a great job here representing his clients. I certainly think it's well within this board's, you know, respect and nature to give him some time to talk it over with the landowner and just continue this hearing to a later time. Do you guys, anybody on the board, you know, against that?
Well, yeah, Chris, if I may...
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
We're set on what we want, minimum, you know? I think we're in agreement. I agree with you that if they wanted that little wing up there at the top, yeah, you know, put a house lot or something in there at some point in time, it's fine. But over where that U is that they were showing us, the interior and exterior of that U, no tree cutting. Because I mean, the top left corner is all wetlands. It can't go in there anyway.
But they can clear cut. Remember, guys, they can clear cut for logging. This is, it's not just about putting a house in there, cutting a lot out. You know, I mean, you know, a lot of people own a lot of land and, you know, you, tree forest management's a part of it and making money off your timber is something that's, you know, understandable. It's a viable thing for people to do, but...
Okay, I get it, Chris. But what I'm saying is, let's say, you know, where they have their yellow U, that extended out to the property line on both, on all three sides and then straight across the top.
Yeah.
So I would say, you know, don't put anything in that area. And yeah, exactly, Chris, and right out to the property lines.
Yeah, to the other, so basically that whole big rectangle of the property line. So from the property line by Naquadah to the one down by Central Tree and the whole width of that big kind of rectangle going right out towards Phillips Road. I mean, that little dog legged off there to the right, I might consider listening to something there, but I got to be honest with you guys, I ain't going to give up much more than that.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, Chris. I mean, we could say right now to be, you know, here, we'll approve it with this as a condition and we can approve that and say, there you go, all said and done. If the owner, property owner says, no way, then they can't act on it. I mean, it's as simple as that. Or they have to go through an appeal process or whatever else. But I mean, if we're set on that, there's really no need to continue this out if we're saying, you know, if we're all in agreement on this is where we stand.
No, I know, and I'm glad as a board, we stand united on this. Paul, I think that's a great point. The attorneys asked for some time to speak with the, you know, and I think just out of respect for them, I believe they, you know, they deserve that time to speak, you know, out of the public forum and discuss, you know, how they want to try to mitigate this, if at all. But again, I think we've made it clear where we stand, what this board is looking for, you know, and that's based upon all of those areas, you know, have residential areas and school, school areas around them. And I just think that main rectangle of tree line just needs to stay there to protect this tower. So anyways, that's our opinion. Attorney, do you want, do you want us to continue on this? I mean, you want time to talk to your client?
Yeah, I respectfully would request that. I think it's, I think we try to be professional with this application. I think it's a responsible application. This issue came up at the last meeting. I don't have consensus on it with the property owner, so I'd like the ability to at least have one more conversation with them and flush it out. And then at the next meeting, you will decide, as you've stated today, and I'll have a better sense as to whether or not that's a condition we can live with or not. Because we want to be able to satisfy all these conditions. You know, we don't come into this wanting to satisfy one or two. We need to satisfy all of them to continue operation of this site. So I would like a continuance, please.
Okay, I think that's more the fair enough. I would like just to request, attorney, that if you, if you do, if you have any areas that you might want to clear, you might want to cut, if you could provide a drawing for us, submit that drawing potentially, you know, possibly if you can before the, before the next hearing, so that the board has a chance to review that prior to the hearing. The townspeople have a chance to review that online as well. And then we can discuss this a little more, hopefully to a point where something can get worked out. But nonetheless, I think you know where we stand. We certainly stand where you guys stand. So I'm in favor of allowing the attorney to do that. Anybody on the board have any issues with that?
No.
Okay, Rick, Paul, you guys okay with them?
No, Chris, that's reasonable.
Okay, all right. So at this point, as you know, for no really reason to continue on here, it's just going to be a matter of voting and working up the order of conditions. So without this...
Do we have any time issues on the application itself or, I don't know?
No, we have 90 days from when we conclude this hearing.
Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, so let's look at...
Federal shot clock? The federal shot clock? Where does that stand?
What was that again?
David, what's the federal shot clock? How much time is that?
Well, in it, yeah, it's 150 days from the date the application was filed, plus any extensions that you and the applicant usually agreed to. Have you been monitoring that?
No, this is, this is the first time it's come up.
Attorney Sousa, do you have, have you been tracking that?
I have not. But we will extend to the next hearing, Dave.
Okay.
To allow the board enough of an opportunity to give us this continuance that I think is necessary. I can work with Tamika. I've signed each of the extensions that have been needed until today.
So...
Super, thanks.
Thank you, David. I don't know if our bylaw references or is in line with that federal...
No, Chris, it doesn't address it.
No, it doesn't mention that. So... That's right.
You know, we're dealing with Massachusetts law and this is a federal statute, so...
All right, so what date are we looking at? Well...
The 13th, the 20th, and the 27th are out. I don't know if the board is amenable to meet on a Thursday evening instead of a Wednesday evening. July 28th is an option.
I can't.
Good.
I can't go with the 28th.
Is there a way that the week of the 20th and the 21st, right?
Correct, I'm with you, the 18th. The 14th, I think I just...
Can I see it?
Book something for the 14th.
Hang on a second, the 28th.
I can do the 28th.
I can't, I'm no good on it for Thursday.
You're no good on Thursdays?
Yep.
What about Tuesdays? You guys good on Tuesdays?
Tuesdays are tough because those are regular meeting nights for, like, the planning board, Concom. Those nights are tough to be able to find space to.
What about Mondays, Tamika?
The alternate Monday from select board would be an option. So the select board is meeting on the 25th, so July 18th is available. Nope, because you're gone that week. So we're really looking at August at this point. And if we do that, we might as well vote for a Wednesday.
August 3rd. You guys, can you guys do the August 3rd? Rick, Paul, attorney?
Yes, that works for me.
All right.
David Maxson, you good for the 3rd of August?
Can we do, can we do August, the Monday, Monday, August 1st?
I cannot do that day.
Yeah, I can't do that day either. I apologize.
It's a, yeah, it's August 3rd.
Chris, could I suggest that we do the hearing on the 3rd and if we do need David Maxson's input, we'll just simply have to get it from him. He doesn't necessarily have to be on the screen.
David, David can make that, correct?
Yes, it was Paul.
It was Paul that could not do the 3rd or wanted to do the 1st.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you do the 3rd, Paul, or no?
Yeah, I can do it. I'll reschedule some stuff.
So, of course, we are going to have to address Rick.
Yeah, you're going to have to get an extension for Rick.
It's only until July 30th.
Yeah.
So I'll have to work that out with him.
Yeah. Have the select board do that either next Monday or the 25th, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Chris, could I ask David a question?
Yeah, please do.
Hey, David, could you shoot Tamika like a snapshot of that particular regulation, the statute, the federal shot clock? Because I'm just not familiar with it. I'd just like to take a quick look at it if I could.
Uh, sure.
If it's, if it's not a problem.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to recall if I could just cite, cite to you what, where it is.
Is it a USC? Is it, is it part of the telecommunications act? Or is it a general federal statute?
Well, it was FCC interpretation of the telecommunications act in terms of what timely is. Since then, they did add some shot clock language to the code of federal regulations under the FCC. And I'm not recalling whether that's in there. I think it may be now.
If you want to, if you want to... If you just want to give me a site to the CFR, that'd be fine. If it's, if it's not, I don't want you to climb a mountain to be able to do it. If it's on the top of your head, fine, you know?
All right, yeah, and I have all that stuff on my computer, so I can get it to you. Actually, if you Google FCC shot clock, you'll find it.
All right, all right, that's, that's fine, David. I'll just do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until August 3rd.
Can you have a second?
Chris, before we do, can, do we want to hear any more from the public right now?
Uh, no, not right now.
Then why have a public meeting?
I have a comment about tree coverage.
Not right now. We'll bring it up after we get the revised plan or any other input. Right now, we've got to get more feedback from the applicant and the owner. And until then, what are we really talking about? I mean, I do respect all your input and everything. Think I've given you a fair, more than equitable chance through all these hearings to speak. But quite honestly, in the essence of time and not wasting any, we're going to talk about something that we're really going to have to talk about again at the next meeting. It just makes sense to get all the information, folks, and then talk and make your opinions based on all the info. But until we get that info from them, what purpose is there to discuss right now? Okay? Any comments you have can be said at that time. Anything else, quite honestly, if you say to us now, I'm going to forget it in a month, to be honest with you. You're just going to have to say it again in a month and I don't want to speak anymore. You don't want to listen to me anymore. So we're not going to talk, we're not going to open this up to the public right now. So with that being said, Paul, you were saying something?
That I was asking to have the public speak at this time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. Yeah, not right now, not at this time.
Does anyone second my motion to continue at 8:30?
Second.
Rick is second in the motion. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor to continue this hearing to August 3rd, 6:00 PM? Please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All, any ayes? Okay, hearing none, the motion goes unanimously to continue this hearing till August 3rd, Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Right back in the library, I'm sure, somewhere. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're more than welcome to stay. Thank you, everybody online. You're welcome. Have a good evening. Okay. Um, all right. Folks, excuse me. Hey, excuse me, folks. We just got a few other things to go through, so if you could just carry conversations outside so we can speak online between everybody. It's hard for them to hear you. Sorry about that, but please just carry it outside, please. Thank you. And that's respectfully, but what do you have? All right, next on the agenda, just going to go over the potential new applicant that we have. He's of interest, Butch Nato.
You know?
I know him, I grew up with him.
I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah, Butch and I grew up in the same neighborhood a couple times apart. He moved up from Texas probably like around the fifth grade. He lived right down the street from me, went to school together all the time. But he's a good buddy of mine. But and Butch, I mean, honestly, Rick may remember, he wanted to get on the board probably about 10, 12 years ago. But at the time, we were full, we didn't have an opening forum, then he jumped on the Board of Health. He was on there for a while. I think he did some time in the Concom. He's been a great guy. He's volunteered a ton of time around things in the town. He's got a good heartbeat, I mean, he's got a good bead for everybody. What's that? Does he still do that?
Yep.
Oh, okay, great. So...
Done deal.
Yeah, he's a good guy, you know, and...
When's the other guy going to join us?
He asked if he should come tonight, but I told him he didn't have to. And Wednesday night's his golf league, so he says, well, I'll just, I should probably go. We do need the numbers here, but a couple guys online here. But, but no, so he'll be the next pertinent new informant, new item.
Yep, so I just need a motion from the board to nominate Butch to the seat as an alternate member and the term will expire in 2024.
Okay, and he'll take away after Rick. So if Rick has to get extended, he'll just come in like after August or after this hearing?
He doesn't have to because he would be taking the alternate seat. Jake is actually going to be taking Rick's seat once Rick leaves that seat because Jake will become a full member. So...
So whatever, we can have him on there.
Yep, so I'll have the select board appoint him at their meeting on the 18th and then Butch can join whenever he wants to.
Okay, terrific. All right, so do we, any other discussion with Butch joining the board, guys? Okay, can I have a motion to allow, to accept Butch Nato to join the ZBAA?
Chris, you should probably refer to him as Elliot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Elliot, Elliot quotation fingers, Butch Nato, to join the board.[1726.81] Yeah, I'm sorry. Elliot, Elliot quotation fingers Butch Nato, to join the board. Bob has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jacob seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor to let Elliot Nato join the ZBBA. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Chris, I'm getting a lot of background conversations. Are there...
Yeah, hey, guys, excuse me. They can't hear us online. Can you just carry it down the other way, please? Thank you very much. Okay, so all in favor to allow Elliot Nato to join the ZBBA, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Chris, Chris, technically, we're just nominating him to the Select Board.
Nominate, yeah, okay. Yeah, all right. So adjust that motion to nominate for the Select Board to appoint Butch Nato to the, Elliot Nato to the ZBBA. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any ayes? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Tamika, any other issues, items of concern?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Jacob. Jacob, again, you guys, you and Rick, you guys are rock stars with the legal stuff, man. That was a great point you brought up. And I can't believe they wanted to cut all those trees down, but whatever. Again, so anyways, we'll discuss that at the next meeting. All right, so nobody else has anything? Will you have a motion to close this hearing for tonight?
I'll make said motion.
All right, have a motion, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor closing the hearing tonight? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any ayes? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Hearing is closed at 7:00, 7:12.